Something you want to pursue. If you want to either have it resuraveled, if you want to go back and recheck those deeds. I did talk to Dan Swenson here to find out, just so you'd have an idea of what it would cost to resurvey this. And he said he would give a bid of $1,200 to resurvey this because he would need to do everything all over again. He simply couldn't just recheck these pins because he would have to go back through and do the research of the deeds and everything to make sure that it was all. So that it didn't come out the same. He was pretty confident that it would still come out the same way.
So the same question would still be hanging out there even with another survey, right?
So really, what it's looking like is maybe the deeds were, maybe not written incorrectly, but it's just the way the deeds were written. I shouldn't say they were erroneous or incorrect. I don't want to speculate any of that. But the fact that they were recorded in giving this property to Mr. Greaves at the time. Maybe they shouldn't have, but they did.
We're not E5ed, are we?
We really aren't, no. Sorry for that, but it's back to the same place. But if the deeds are saying that that's the ownership, it's up to the commission then to decide if you want to recall these deeds. Or have a survey done to recheck the deeds.
I guess two things, really, I have to go by the deeds. It looks to me like I almost have to look by the deeds and the survey. And I have to have both, aren't I?
If you wanted to do a new survey, you know, they would go back through and they would recheck all of these deeds and make sure that this was done as an accurate reflection of the deeds that are recorded. Does that make sense? Because basically, a survey is just a picture of the deeds because the deeds tell the story. This just gives you the picture of it, which is much easier to understand as opposed to reading through the deeds and trying to determine where all of those lines are lying.
We essentially have a conflict between two landowners and who has or right to what deed is what is in question here.
And the county did not give deed to this. I think that's important to note. The county did not give deed to any of this, to any of this Bridge Street, which is the practice of the county commission to not give deeds. These deeds were done through private transactions.
Sure, in that case, it's opening up more and more anyway.
You know, you could put this to bed, I think, once and for all by having a new survey done. It's just a matter of do you want to pay that money? But if another survey is done and it would definitively show this, I'm not trying to lead you down one path or another, but you know, we've gotten legal opinion from Carla, from Susan. You know, I've looked through everything I can. I can't make it any different than what it is. But if you were to have one more survey done, you know, again, you're going to be on that $1,200. But then it would be definitive. It would be done.
Would it, it wouldn't, that might be the best way for the county. For the citizens, it wouldn't really clear up their question. This becomes neighbors looking at neighbors, right?
Yep. And it would probably clear up their question because it would be, it would be done because we could definitively say it was the deeds. If it were the deeds, the way that they were written, they would show this.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, they're in the works.
But it wouldn't solve their problem.
I think they have some issues.
It just gives them solid information.
Right, which is still not, not what they're looking for. You know, and I did talk to Bill Lane about this.
Can we ask a question?
Come on up to the table. This affects you.
This end of the street, the way I understand it, is this county property. We've discussed it at great length. The end of Hill Street and right handed down from Carla is when we were initially sitting in front of the council was the decision that adjoining, if you close the street, it goes to the adjoining landowner. You guys are the adjoining landowner of the end of Hill Street where the joint's bridge as the commission or as county. That was your piece of property. You've never deeded it to anybody. I don't see how it becomes anybody else. There wasn't Greaves to get. There wasn't Mitchell's to give away. It wasn't anybody's to deed to somebody else. The joining Brecker's lots and down, those are a whole different issue than what we're talking about. Hill Street was your street, this wide open street, and the end of that street is what we're talking about. The rest of this stuff down to the west or whatever would be something totally different, quite honestly. There wasn't anybody making a complaint that I know about that.
We call him fine with Bill Lane.
The idea that the end of Hill Street has been closed off by 35 feet and it blocks our garage door is what it does. So there was obviously somebody that wouldn't have agreed to closing that because Scotty Knob owned it at the time, and I know he was mad about it. We can call him and we can get him on the phone, but he was upset about it. He didn't live here at the time, so he didn't raise a stink about it. Bill Lane had moved his fence on an angle as a nice gesture. Not near wide enough. You can't hardly get a four-wheeler in the end of the garage. So it's not, and if it's not his, it's not his. He understands that it is because it was surveyed that way. But I don't see how, if the adjoining landowner gets half of the street, I don't see how that was anybody else's to give away unless the county deeded it to somebody, and the county doesn't deed streets. So I don't see how that could have happened. Now, the rest of that property, whatever the church did and whatever whoever Mitchell owned, if they deeded to Greaves, whatever they did is kind of here and there. Bill has deeds on it and such and such and so on. But the end of the street's the end of the street. It's going to be no different than me going out there and building another fence out 30 feet onto the street and just saying, well, if somebody complains, then maybe you guys will act upon it. But all I got to do is get a deed written on it and it's fair game. And it just doesn't seem proper when the adjournment acting right now has already handed down that decision that the end of the street or the end, that it is county. I mean, it's property that goes with that, with the adjoining property. And the end of Hill Street is what's in question here. It's where it joined Bridge Street.
His marker that he has actually, where they have it surveyed, is actually 3 feet in our garage.
It's right in the garage door. He moved it out so it's visible because it would be right inside the garage door. And it's just not, it's county stuff. I mean, that's the county street.
They're just asking for the road to be open to Hill Street. Hill and Bridge where they come together.
Right, to the center line of Bridge Street. And I know Bill Lane has said to you that maybe I should get ahold of him and we could make a deal. Well, I don't know how I make a deal on something that's county property. You know, that just doesn't seem right, that I can strike up a deal with Bill on county property. It's not my property to strike up a deal. It's affecting my property because my property has a garage door that opens into his fence and it doesn't make any sense that way. I think, and it's my assumption, but I believe it was just mis-surveying. When you read the deeds and you read everything, it's from Brecker and Doug and Drick, these lots, to the west is what the deed that we read, what was deeded by Greaves was that piece. There's nothing that I read states the part of Hill Street. I mean, I just haven't found that. They just surveyed that piece in as probably a mistake. You know, people do make that and if it was mistakenly done. But I think going over deeds that go on down behind the church and everything is honestly, it's a waste of your money unless somebody else is complaining. If the church is saying, hey, somebody's got my property, or Brecker's saying, hey, somebody got my property. But that is old stuff and that's stuff that I'm not here to dispute. I'm here asking that it's the end of the street that is county property. It's an open street, Hill Street is, and it's the end of it, and half of Bridge should have stayed with that street. It should have been to the center line of the street. It makes perfect sense if you go out and look at it. It makes perfect sense in all way, shape of the law of how everything reads. So that's what we were asking of the commission was to make sure that that's right, I guess, is really, because it sure doesn't seem right. Otherwise, the county must have gave their, they must have deeded their portion of the street to Greaves also at some point.
But that deed would show up with all the stuff that Nicole's been digging out, right?
It should.
Correct. And there was no deed from the county for this property. It was simply deeded through Mr. Greaves and through his applicable trust.
It looks to me like, and I could be wrong, that maybe the best thing is to have Mr. Lane come in and you all come in and meet with the commissioners and...
I'm okay with that. You go.
Yeah, you know, I'm honestly, I'm fine with it. But it's still, and I'll be here at every meeting you got that has to do with Hill Street. I really don't have a problem with that. But it's not between Bill and I. It absolutely isn't.
But it would be between Bill and the county to worry.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Somebody needs to tell Bill that, hey, I think we got 30 feet of our...
We wouldn't have to do a resurvey. If he would agree to a boundary relocation, because even though, you know, these deeds may have been written incorrectly, this is still an accurate depiction of the deeds. But so now we still need to rectify this situation. But if Bill would have come in and we could speak with him about a boundary relocation, it would still, I would think it would have to be the county's expense because we wouldn't want to put that burden on him to say, hey, we have your properties to pay for it.
It looks like me, the only survey that has to be done, like I said, there's no disputing any rest is come off of Farring Street there. The pins are right there. They're from this 2001, whatever year it was.
One pin relocated.
Yeah, and all it has to do is measure down and say, this is the end of Hill Street. So there wouldn't be near as much surveying that would be done.
I wouldn't think they just set up and resurveyed our, they surveyed our lots when we had moved here this spring. So, I mean, 99% of it should be done. I mean, he found all the things and set up and he's got the point out there at the end of Hill Street where he had set up before, so it's...
Bernadette, do you want to come up here too? I'm sure you could shine some light on this.
Well, number one, I will say that if we were to survey right now, it would look the exact same picture. Not that I want to turn the work down, but surveyors can only survey deeds, like Nicole said. We just do a drawing. We do not determine boundary lines. So in order for there to be a different survey, there would have to be different deeds. Because like I said, surveyors, all they can do is retrace deeds, make a picture of what the ownership says as far as the deeds. As far as property lines, you know, we just show by the deeds that this is where property lines are to our best knowledge. No surveyor can say exactly where a property line is. That's only a court of law. So that's why I said, without changing deeds, the retracement survey is going to look exactly the same.
Well, it sounds to me like it's wasted money if we have it retraced right now.
Right, yes. And like I said, not throwing work out.
There's still a deed. There's a deed for that particular part.
There is a deed on file on each of these pieces that are shown here that are depicted there. I think the other suggestion that you had with Bill Lane, if they want to decide on, and I'm not saying Bill Lane's deeds are correct or incorrect, but the fact that they are there, you know, the best idea would be for Bill and everyone to get together and if they would agree to do a boundary relocation or the county to, you know, declare that deed null and void on that portion of the street, you know, I think it has to do with the deed that whether it was filed correctly or incorrectly, it's filed. And, you know, as surveyors, we couldn't make any decision on that unless, you know, there's agreement between parties to do a boundary relocation. You know, I'm not arguing that that should or should not have been deeded to Bill Lane.
Who would have deeded it? How has anybody deeded it if it's county property to begin with?
Well, it's, you know, that's what's hard if you ask Carla, the county attorney. The county doesn't actually own the property, and that's why she said that the county should not have been issuing deeds? Which is kind of a catch-22 because then how does it transfer unless a property owner transfers it to themselves as the adjacent property? And, you know, I, it's hard to go back into the past and say, you know, whether a deed was filed correctly, incorrectly, if there was reasons or non-reasons for it to be done. You know, we can only go by as a surveyor what is on file. So, you know, I can't argue or the validity of it or if the county...
So it's a quick claim deed that you're reading that says that the end of Hill Street was given by Mitchell de Greaves? Or what deed writes the end of Hill Street?
There, yeah, there, well, it's, and I know...
Starts at lot one and goes to the west.
Right. And this description, it doesn't mention Hill Street, but it just calls points of record and goes along as it meets and bounds. You know, it just goes from here to here, to here, to here, to here, to here and back. It doesn't mention specifically, I know, because we talked about that before...
The quick claim deed mentions specifically that it goes from Brecker's lot to the west. It specifically mentions it in the quick claim deed that Mitchell gave to Greaves.
Right. It mentions, and I might have that, I could look. It says along the south boundary of lots one and two or...
It's going to be from this arrow that way.
Yeah. But then it does go all the way around if you follow it meets and bounds.
I guess the question is, is who owns Hill Street? Does the county own Hill Street or does Bill Lane own part of Hill Street? That's the question. That's that little piece of what we're asking. That's a whole thing right now.
There was a quick claim deed from here that way. And I understand your meets and bounds, but you guys wrote the meets and bounds, didn't you, when you did the survey?
But we went on the deeds, I know.
But there was no deed.
There was no deed on the Hill Street. So it's not, quite honestly, all it is is quite possibly the surveyor made a mistake. And I'm not saying it was on purpose. It's just that mistakes happen. And if somebody could admit that, you know what, we made a mistake, that is county street there, and we just took that into account and we wrote meets and bounds around the street, when the quick claim deed obviously states from lots one and two that way, it does not take in the end of Hill Street, which is part of the county's property because it's a county street that adjoined Bridge Street. So it does not take that in. It is, I don't, I don't see how that's not fairly clear, that it's quite possible that the surveyor made an honest mistake out there when they wrote the thing. I mean, I really think that that's the case.
Well, whether it's deed or survey, we're back to square one, that, you know, the commission has to either say, you know, this is wrong or this is wrong, the deeds or the surveying or what. So that's what I'm saying. The very best and the easiest, unless the commission wants to come up and throw the survey out or throw the deeds out, is for Bill Lane to make an agreement to do a boundary relocation.
Because regardless of what happens, if you have another survey done, it ends up looking exactly the same, then you're going to have to go back and look through these deeds again and find out if the deeds were incorrect and then do another survey. So it's chicken and egg. Do you go through these deeds first and see if they were done incorrect? Do you do the survey to see if the survey matches the deed exactly? If it does, then you start another one.
Is that when you do that boundary relocation?
Or we just call Bill in here and we just have another meeting and say, hey, how would you feel about a boundary relocation? You know, I had a phone conversation with him and, you know, and I talked to Greg after and he said, you know, he'd be willing to make a deal. But so he's not dead set on these, at least from our previous phone conversation, he is not dead set on these boundary lines having to be there. But I feel like maybe we're missing a piece of the puzzle if we don't call him in here to at least, you know, get rid of all of our options. Maybe if we can make it easier, instead of going through, I mean, you know, we still have next steps if that doesn't work. We could do another survey. We could go through deeds again. We could, you know, throw out deeds. That's just a huge, huge Pandora's box that I don't know that the commission is ready to open at this point.
And you could be exactly the same place.
You could leave it in that frame here.
I think with that being part of the picture, you know, if I was in his shoes, I would greatly appreciate you calling me and having me come in and explain it to me. I mean, I would, I don't know how I would be, whether I want to give it away or not, but it's, it's not even give it away because it's not yours. You know, it's not his to give away necessarily. It's just been his because by default, really, there's nothing gained or nothing lost from him that I can see. I mean, it's a, it's a, what, 70 by 30-foot piece of property that I watched and monitored this summer and three grasshoppers ate there. And that's about all that you could feed off of it because quite honestly, there's nothing there.
Not even there.
There's nothing there, though. Yeah, it just really isn't anything that's anything other than, and I've said this before to the commission, that the only people affected by it, honestly, are Heather and I because we can't enter our garage door. I mean, that's really what the problem is, is you can't get in the garage. And at some point, I would have thought somebody would have said, wait a minute, now, this was, I'm always sure this was deeded this way because it doesn't make sense. I mean, it really doesn't, that you were jogging from somebody's garage on an open street and take that out. So, so, yeah, that's, I guess, we're kind of at the same place, only maybe a little further. If we could get Bill.
Thank you, sir. So how about if I talk to Bill when I leave the commission meeting today? I didn't want to schedule for next Monday in case that doesn't work for him. I'll talk to Bill and then I will get back to the commission and get on their agenda. And I'm going to say a half an hour is probably better than 15 minutes.
Okay. Thanks for all your work on it.
I'm sorry, I still can't give you an definitive answer. I'm just going to come in here today and say, gee, that's, it's easy, but... Yeah. Thank you, thank you, everybody. So I've got three books here. One of them, this one specifically, I need back. You're welcome to look through it as I review the fact report if you'd like. Okay. And then if you would like...
Maybe he's had it.
No, but I will give him that one copy.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Greg, and Heather, please, let me give you this, just from Susan Swenson, like that sort of determination on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys have a good day.
You too.
Four copies of the findings of fact report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Four copies of public hearing minutes. So, since this is your first time with the Townsend Mobile Home Estates, would you like me to read this findings of fact report? You're reading. And I also want to let you know that the deadline for action on it is November 12th. So if you choose to not take action on this subdivision, then you will have one more week. But you will have to make a decision by the 12th, which is next Tuesday. The commission will make it. Perfect. Thank you. What do you want in the audience to see a copy of the plan here? You're welcome. Do you have a copy? Say yes. All right, so this is the Townsend Mobile Home Estates. This is a mobile home park. This is the first one I've done for the county. I think it's the first one we've had in the county in a really long time. So I'm just going to go to it because we have all of the information in front of you. So this is the findings of fact and order in the matter of the application of Dennis McDonald for the preliminary plan approval of the Townsend Mobile Home Estates development. Pursuant to Montana Subdivision Plating Act, section 763101 through 763614, Montana codes annotated and the Broadwater County subdivision regulations, the Broadwater County Planning Board reviewed the proposed preliminary plan for 16 residential mobile home spaces and one residential home lot as submitted by the applicant, together with required supplementary plans and information, to determine if the information submitted meets the requirements of the Montana Subdivision Plating Act and the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. The planning board considered all submitted reports, exhibits, et cetera, and listened to public testimony and considered written comments. Therefore, with completion of the review and the receipt of all public input, the planning board being fully advised of all matter presented to it regarding this application, the planning board makes the following findings of fact. Date of application was June 5th, 2012. They attained sufficiency on August 15th, 2013. We held the public hearing on October 16th, 2013, and the review period ends November 12th of 2013. The applicant is Dennis McDonald of Millville, Montana. The applicant's representative is Shaver Surveying of Townsend, Montana. The proposed development is located off of Mill Road and Canton Lane, just north of the city limits of Townsend, Montana. Proposal: the Townsend Mobile Home Estates development is not to be subdivided. The property owner intends to develop 16 mobile home spaces and one existing single-family dwelling from an existing five-acre parcel of land. The minimum lot size proposed is 5,849 square feet and maximum lot size proposed is 16,438 square feet. The required preliminary review fee of $3,700, the weed inspection fee of $440, the fire inspection fee of $185, and the road inspection fee of $185 have all been paid. All of the proposed 17 lots are subject to DEQ review. No covenants are proposed at this time. If covenants are to be created for this development, they will be filed with the final plan. There is no homeowners association proposed at this time. Prior to obtaining final plan approval, the developer will be required to draft a road management plan for the interior subdivision road. Review is performed pursuant to Montana Subdivision Plating Act, section 763101 through 763614, Montana codes annotated, and the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. The proposed preliminary plan, Townsend Mobile Home Estates, as submitted by the applicant, together with required supplementary plans and information, appear to satisfy the requirements of these regulations and comply with the Broadwater County Growth Policy Plan dated July 2007. Physical conditions: a vicinity map as well as a preliminary plan is provided in the preliminary plan application. No rock outcroppings or the presence of bedrock have been identified on the property. The nearest open water body is the Montana Ditch, which is approximately 0.6 miles to the east. The Missouri River is located approximately 0.73 miles northwest of the property. The proposed development is not in an area subject to flood hazard. Water supply: in the preliminary plan application, the developer indicates that these lots will be served by a multiple-family water supply system. However, plans have changed and proposed mobile home park will connect to the existing public water supply system known as the Mountain View Mobile Home Park. An easement has been created for the new mobile home park for perpetual access to the existing public water supply. The existing well that currently serves the house will be properly abandoned. Information from two nearby well lots is provided as item number 14 in the preliminary plan application. One of the wells is utilized as a multiple-family domestic well. The other well is utilized seasonally for domestic lawn and garden and stock purposes. Wastewater treatment: a new public onsite wastewater treatment system will serve the 16 mobile home spaces as well as the existing house. The existing and unpermitted septic system for the house will be abandoned. Three 3,500-gallon concrete septic tanks and two recirculation dose tanks will be installed as well as 3,528 square feet of freshenized gravelless drain field area. These tanks and drain field areas will be located in the parkland area, which is to be located on a 0.7-acre parcel in the southeast corner of the property. A mixing zone easement has been established along the west boundary of this development and extending on across Mill Road. The Montana Department of Environmental Quality will review the atmosphere and impact these onsite wastewater treatment systems will have on groundwater quality. DEQ will issue a determination of non-significant impacts in a certificate of subdivision approval, which must be presented to the county for recordation of the final plan. Solid waste: lot owners will be responsible for disposal of their own solid waste. The residents will have the option of hiring an independent contractor to pick up their solid waste or transport it themselves to the Townsend Canister Site, which is located approximately .34 miles to the west. Drainage: all roadway drainage structures will be designed in accordance with regulations as required by Broadwater County. Reports for storm drainage are provided in the preliminary plan application as item number 28. Evaluation criteria and present land use: the current use of this five-acre parcel is single-family residential and horse pasture, with exon agriculture. The development of this property should not have an effect on agricultural productivity. The property is not considered prime farm land, nor is it considered to be usable for any reasonable agricultural operation due to the limited size of the parcel. The only recent agricultural activity conducted on the site has been for horse pasture. Therefore, the Townsend Mobile Home Estates development does not present any interference with agricultural operation in the vicinity. The NRCI soil type present on the property is a Villian Scrabo series, which consists of a silty-drained clay loam and a cotton loam. Environmental assessment criteria: an environmental assessment was prepared and is found in the preliminary plan application as item number 22. Letters requesting input from public agencies, along with responses received, are provided as well. Geology: no falls, slides, or slumps, or adverse soil, rock, mud, or snow have been identified on the property. No rock outcroppings have been identified on the project. Areas of shallow bedrock, unstable soils, or unstable slopes have not been identified either. Vegetation: there are no marshes, shor... Vegetation: There are no marsh, shrub, or forestlands located on the project. There are few trees and vegetation cover located on the property. The existing vegetation consists of light native grasses. Existing vegetation will be preserved as much as possible by utilizing the existing driveway for a portion of the subdivision road, which will then extend through the present horse pasture. According to the preliminary plan application, the developer has not identified any noxious weeds, but the county weed coordinator will determine this upon inspection of the property. A weed management plan has been developed to control and prevent the growth of noxious weeds. The developer will be responsible for adhering to the weed management plan. Effects on wildlife and habitat: According to the preliminary plan application, no wildlife currently utilizes this property. Because of the close proximity to the city limits of Townsend, as well as the fact that this is a relatively small parcel of land with one home and horse pasture on it, the lack of use by wildlife is causal. Effects on historical features: A letter was sent to the Montana Historical Society to determine if there are any known historical, cultural, or archaeological sites which may be affected by a proposed subdivision. A response dated July eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, was received from David Murdo, Cultural Records Manager. According to him, no previously recorded historic or archaeological sites have been identified within the designated search local cap, and a cultural resource inventory is then warranted at this time. Should cultural resources be inadvertently discovered during this project, the developer will contact the state historic preservation office. Effects on roads: Access to the development will be off of Canton Lane, which is an existing county road. The internal subdivision road, Kelly Lane, is a loop road from which all lots will have direct access to. The subdivision road will be designed by a registered professional engineer and constructed to Broadwater County subdivision road standards per the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. Prior to receiving final approval, the road material must also be tested and comply with Broadwater County subdivision road standards. Utilities: Utility service will be provided by Northwestern Energy. A letter from Northwestern Energy has been received indicating that they do have adequate capacity to accommodate this new development. The developer's representative has mailed letters to both companies requesting their review of this plan. Natural gas service is not currently available. Effects on emergency services: The proposed development is within the Broadwater County Rural Fire District jurisdiction. The distance from the nearest fire station, the City of Townsend Fire Hall, to the subdivision is approximately zero point eight-five miles. According to the fire plan, the developer is willing to pay the five hundred dollars per lot cash and lube of water supply fee. However, to date, the fire plan has not been signed or approved by the Broadwater County Rural Fire District Chief. The Broadwater County Sheriff's Department will provide lawn enforcement services and is located approximately point six-five miles from the proposed subdivision. The Broadwater Health Center, also located in Townsend, will provide both ambulance and emergency medical services to the subdivision residents. Effects on schools: The proposed development is served by the Townsend Schools. Approximately twenty-six students could reside in this development according to figures obtained through the growth policy plan. Because of the close proximity of this development to the Townsend Schools, it should not have an impact on the existing bus routes. To date, a letter from the Townsend School Superintendent regarding any concerns have not been received. Effects on land use: Lands to the north of this property are also utilized for a mobile home park. Lands to the east and south are residential agricultural, and lands to the west are agricultural. Effects on public health and safety: Since the property is situated with in between two relatively busy roads, one of them being utilized primarily for heavy truck traffic, these could pose a serious risk to the safety of the subdivision residents, especially to children and domestic animals. These risks can be mitigated by proper setbacks, fencing, and homeowner awareness. Parks and recreation facilities: Since this development is creating spaces for rent or lease and not lots for sale, the parkland dedication is not a requirement. However, the area reserved for the drainfield and replacement area are shown as park area on the preliminary plan. It is hereby ordered that the preliminary plan for the Townsend Mobile Home Estates development is approved, subject to the conditions listed below. Final plan approval shall be contingent upon completion and compliance with these conditions. Number one, plans for sewage treatment and water supply shall be submitted to the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and the Broadwater County Environmental Health Department for review and approval. A certificate of subdivision approval shall be filed with the final plan. Number two, the developer must verify that the existing county road, Canton Lane, will meet the Broadwater County subdivision road standards for vehicle trips per day at its current condition. Number three, a stormwater drainage plan, meeting the requirements of the county subdivision regulations, shall be submitted to the county planning department for review and recommendation. The drainage plan shall protect the subgrade and allow for safe placement and removal of mobile homes. Number four, prior to any development and/or soil disturbance, a weed management plan for the proposed development shall be submitted to the county weed district for review and approval. All specifications and requirements of the approved plan shall be met. Number five, prior to any development, two approach permits shall be requested from the county road department for the two access points off of county, off of Canton Lane. All requirements of the approved permit shall be met. Number six, an exterior boundary fence shall be installed around the perimeter of the property. Number seven, a pedestrian easement shall be added to the final plan to allow for connectivity to the existing Mountain View Mobile Home Park to the north. Number eight, the applicant will be required to submit the preliminary plan and final plan drawings in electronic format to Broadwater County in RFTIS, AutoCAD, or MicroStation format. Additional materials may be requested by the county in electronic format to facilitate review of application materials. Number nine, plans for the location and installation of individual manboxes shall be reviewed and approved by the United States Postal Service prior to installation. Number ten, the applicant and the fire protection authority having jurisdiction shall use their best efforts to draft a fire protection plan specifically for this subdivision, in accordance with the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. The plan shall be equally acceptable to the SBAHJ, the applicant, and the county governing authority. The plan shall adequately address the fire risk analysis, all findings of fact, and appropriate mitigation measures. In the event the parties are unable to come to agreement by the final plan's submission, the applicant shall become eligible to provide the per lot cash and lube fee for water supply, as may be defined in the Broadwater County subdivision regulations in effect at the time of submission. Number eleven, the applicant shall complete the following for construction of the internal access road. A, prior to the construction of any roads or the installation of any utilities, plans for the subject road and utilities shall be submitted to the county planning department. B, improve the internal access road to the specifications required by the county subdivision regulations. An engineer registered in the state of Montana shall certify all improvements of meeting county road standards. Twelve, the internal access road shall be given a unique road name that is reviewed and approved by the county planning department. The name of the internal access road shall be shown on the face of the final plan and reflected in all documents of this subdivision. Number thirteen, the final plan shall be prepared in accordance with applicable state survey requirements, Montana Subdivision Plating Act survey requirements, and county subdivision regulations. Number fourteen, a book and page reference to the restrictive covenants filed with the county court and recorder shall be indicated on the face of the final plan. In addition, restrictive covenants revocable or alterable only with the consent of the Board of County Commissioners shall be placed upon the property and shall provide for the following. A, notification of potential health risks from radon concentrations and that such risks can be evaluated through soil tests and mitigated through radon abatement techniques incorporated in the structures. B, a notification that all dwelling units within the subdivision should be constructed to specifications which may or exceed equivalent provisions in the applicable state building code for this size and zone, which is zone three. C, any additional replacement or relocated utility lines shall be installed underground in accordance with county subdivision regulations unless otherwise determined by the utility provided. D, any exterior lighting shall be directed downward to minimize durability beyond the property lines. E, the International Dark Sky Program, firewise design standards, and water conservation landscaping design shall be included in the restrictive covenants. F, notification of the presence of ag operations in the vicinity. G, a waiver of the right to protest to join a special district for the purpose of providing community water and/or wastewater treatment system improvements and renovations. H, a restrictive covenant binding the landowner, any heir successors, and his sons, and all future owners of property within the subdivision, agreeing therein to hold Broadwater County harmless and indemnify Broadwater County, from all claims, demands, obligations, suits, causes of action, damages, and liability, including the county's costs and attorney's fees arising in any manner whatsoever out of or relating to the existence, use, operation, repair, and remains of the following. Subitem one, earthquake fault zone and any seismic activity, and subitem two, water availability. I, each lot should be maintained in a clean, attractive, and mood-free manner. Noxious weeds must be full-sprayed or cut prior to safe maturity. J, all cats and dogs must be restrained, penned, or otherwise under the control of their owner at all times. K, a prohibition of the raising, confinement, and/or keeping of livestock on all lots with exception to livestock temporarily maintained for 4-H activities. L, a prohibition of the raising. Let me read. So, K and L. L says, I'll, I'll read L and then you can determine which one of these you want to get rid of. A prohibition of the raising, confinement, and/or keeping of livestock on all lots or certain lots shall allow for livestock if a small acreage livestock management plan is reviewed and approved by the county extension agent and submitted to the county. I would think that you would want to eliminate K because the extension agent is the same as the 4-H agent, and then that way, they can't just simply say that these are animals for 4-H and leave them there forever, and they would have to have a small acreage livestock management plan. So, I would like to get rid of K if that places forward.
I concur.
I agree.
M, address numbers shall be clearly marked at the driveway entrance to each lot and be easily identified from the road. N, a waiver of right to protest joining a rural improvement or maintenance district for the purpose of road maintenance, mosquito control, or equitably funding parks and maintenance of parks. Fifteen, prior to filing the final plan, following improvements shall be installed or otherwise guaranteed. A, roads. B, any necessary improvements required by the stormwater drainage plan, weed management plan, or approach permit. C, agility is abiding and available to each space. Electrical and telephone shall be underground. D, road identification signs and traffic signs. Sixteen, prior to filing the final plan, the applicant shall, A, provide proof that all taxes and special assessments assessed and levied on the property are paid for the current tax year, including any past delinquencies. And B, provide documentation and abstract of title or plating certificate showing that the applicant is the lawful owner of the property with the apparent authority to subdivide the same, showing the names of lien holders or claimants of record, and the rate of consent to the subdivision by the owners of the land, if other than the applicant, and any lien holders or claimants of record against the land. The applicant is financially responsible for actual outside engineering consulting, professional and/or contracted service fees, et cetera, at the sole discretion of the county for additional review and/or final plan approval of the proposed development. Eliminating plan approval of the Townsend Mobile Home Estates development shall be enforced for three calendar years. At the end of this period, the governing body may, at the, at the request of the subdivider, extend its approval for a mutually agreed-upon period of time. Any mutually agreed-upon extension must be in writing and dated and signed by the members of the governing body and the subdivider or the subdivider's agent. The governing body may issue more than one extension. The party is defined by seventy-six-three-six-two-five MCA who is agreed to by a decision of the governing body. May, within thirty days after this decision, appeal to the Broadwater County District's And also, before you consider making a decision, this did go before the city because it is within one mile of a third-class city or town, so for our regulations, it had to go to the Townsend City Council. They were unable to schedule a meeting until today of their city planning board. So, Diana told me that she would have a response to me as soon as they met this evening, so I would assume she would have a response to me tomorrow on what the city planning board, how they feel about it. They don't necessarily have to make any recommendations. It's simply because they're so close to town that we require this. It's in our subdivision regulations per MCA code actually, that we allow them to comment on it and provide them with information, so. With that, I guess, I suppose it would be best for the commission to leave until next meeting.
I'd like to hear what they have to say.
And you also have, I've given away all my copies, but you have a copy of our public hearing minutes. There were a couple of members of the public there that were, that had some concerns, mostly with flooding, which is understandable, because they, they had seen it flood. One of them was adjacent landowner Bill Dudy. Aaron Clark now owns property directly across from this development. Are you familiar with where this, this property is, just outside of town? It is not on the FEMA flood plan maps. It's not, it's not in the flood plan according to FEMA's designated map, so there's nothing we can do about the flooding. You know, neighbors can say that they've seen it flood, and I know I'm showing my agricultural ignorance here, but there's a type of irrigation where they, is it flood irrigating? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. They, they spoke of that when the property east of this was flood irrigated in the past. This property also flooded. Another property, they said, hasn't been flood, flood irrigated for several years, but if they chose to.
They have sprinkler system on it, too.
So, maybe that would mitigate that. But the only access is going to be on Canton Lane. The developer agreed, one of the conditions in here was a perimeter fence that came through a discussion with the planning board through the public hearing process, that this Mill Road, of course, has, has a lot of heavy truck traffic, and there's a park area right here, so we really want to be encouraging kids to play here when there's so much traffic going on this road. So, we, we talked about having a perimeter fence installed. Bernadette, the developer's representative, spoke to the developer, and he was completely agreeable to that, so we included it as a condition because we thought that it was in the best interest of public health and safety. Also, we'll leave, we'll leave the discretion up to the developer for a, a connection between Mountain View Mobile Home Park and this. We're not going to tell him where he has to put it. He can certainly have some creative liberties with that. You know, the best place that it would fit for connectivity to Mountain View and this mobile home park. But basically, to discourage, you know, folks, if you want to visit your neighbor, from having to walk out onto the street or drive out onto the street, you know, there can just be this walking path between, and also for the children. You know, there's a small, I think, just open space, not really, not really parkland, but open space in Mountain View. He's not necessarily considering developing this, but you know, if they want to play ball in this park or this park, you know, we really want to keep those kids in a, in a safe place. So, and, and the developer also agreed to that, that he, he was definitely open to the idea of just a, just a ten-foot easement for pedestrian traffic, basically, so people aren't riding four wheels on it, you know, they can ride a bicycle or they can walk.
The current horse pasture in that double-wide trailer, is that in that corner?
Yes, and it's actually a home, Dr. Snartson, he still lives there quite a while ago. And so, this is a, this is a home, it's right here in this parcel, and then all of this, basically, is horse pasture. And so, this is the driveway that this home currently utilizes. So, you know, they're gonna stick to the same, you know, the fact that it's been horse pasture, you know, and it's fairly flat, messing with a lot of photography or vegetation and things like that, so.
Well, and I was thinking it was at the far end, the north end, but it's not.
The home?
Yeah, this here.
This whole thing.
And that's a, you know, where Rick Meyer used to live.
Yeah, the, the Rick Meyer, they own, they own a house here, Larry, sorry, Gary owns a home right here. Mountain View Mobile Home Park is right here. So, this is just this five-acre piece in between the two. So, you know, the edge of town is essentially, you know, right in here. Roger, please.
And I could wait till what the city comes up with, but basically, a lot of them are eating all the regulation and everything, there's. Unless we want to throw something with the regulation in.
I do have just a couple of questions. The garbage fee, the solid waste fee, each trailer will pay that? Is that how it works with this kind of a subdivision?
You know, I'm not sure how the solid waste fee is structured, so I don't want to speak to that necessarily. This is going to be recorded as a plan. When a subdivision, I'm sorry, when a mobile home park is done, it's not done necessarily as a subdivision. They follow the same guidelines and they have to meet the same requirements, but when they record it, they're recording a plan. And so, I don't know how the solid waste fee is, is based. If it's based on home, you know, on per home, or is it on per lot? If it's per home, then yes, each one of them will be assessed that fee. If it's per lot, this is still going to be one lot with seventeen spaces. It will still be taxed as one lot, it'll, it'll look like one parcel.
Would you ask Brian that for next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
And the taxes for this will go to what track? Not commercial. Do you have any idea?
I don't know if there's a separate designation for mobile home parks.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be commercial. It wouldn't be commercial. It would be residential, if anything.
But the whole thing should be paid for by the landowner?
Correct, because it will still have one landowner. Dennis McDonald will still be the landowner of this five acres, so if you had it on cadastro, you wouldn't see all of these lines in here, because it, it would simply show as this same five-acre piece, because these are just spaces.
Rental spaces.
Just rental spaces, yep. So, he's going to still be the one main landowner, but I don't know. Do you want me to find that out, too?
I was curious.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a separate designation or a tax category for a mobile home park.
Yeah, I don't either. This is your first, it's our first, too.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'd be on the individuals' property tax assessment.
So, just reading the minutes from the public comment, Bill Dudy mentioned a question about the mixing zone being eighty-five feet from Rick Meyer's well, and DEQ has said, that's okay, it's been with them for a year and a half, and they've... Have they approved it yet, or are they just working on it?
They have not given it approval. DEQ will not grant approval until the commission signs its findings of fact report.
Okay.
But it, but they're, they're seemingly ready to move forward with it. It's my understanding that it, that it is at least one hundred feet, is that correct?
It is. The well is over a hundred feet.
The well is over a hundred feet.
Oh, yes.
Bill was in, not correct, in his, you know, he was just guessing, but in there is the paperwork that has been sent to DEQ with a hundred-foot isolation zone around Rick Meyer's well, and it is still, it's even over that, beyond that.
Okay.
So it's over a hundred, which is DEQ's limit.
And ours, too, per the regulations, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that, DEQ has pretty much, they haven't granted their approval, but the person doing the DEQ and DEQ have agreed that all of this will work if and when it gets approval from the county. So that's why it kind of took so long was working with DEQ for a year and a half to get all the puzzles, pieces to fit and to work.
Yeah. I wonder, there's probably a lot of these around the state.
That can happen.
Okay, it sounds like we're bored, wishing to wait until you hear from the city.
So could I reschedule at this time? Could I reschedule for next available meeting, which is hopefully no later than the twelfth?
The twelfth, the eleven, uh, ten forty-five?
Okay.
Okay. Actually, we do eleven o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I'll just put it the same.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I have two more questions, if that's okay. I just wanted to finish reading those minutes. Oh, the fire plan has not been signed or approved by the Broadwater County Rural Fire District Chief. That is just for this particular subdivision? Everything's good to go with the regulations?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Just this specific plan. And as you see in here, the fee was five hundred dollars per lot. That's because this was submitted under the old regulations where it was five hundred per lot, not one thousand per lot. If you look back, you know, when it was first submitted, I believe, was June, June fifth, two thousand twelve, we adopted the new regulations December sixth, two thousand twelve.
Okay.
So the five hundred dollars per lot being here is not a misprint.
Okay. That was one of my questions, too.
Okay. I read you.
Yes, you did. And I think you answered. Oh, one question, and I think it's probably too late for this, but the last paragraph after the last page, before the signature page, at the end of this period, the governing body may have to request a subdivision or extend its approval. Could we, in the future, put a sentence in there? Could you put a sentence in there that says something about we'll submit a request prior to the expiration of that year's extension? Just so that it's in writing for the subdividers that they have to do it before it expires?
And just so you know, per MCA, they could request it even after it expires.
Oh, okay.
How is that?
I don't know. Case law, actually. There was a development or a subdivision that expired, and about ten years later, they came back and they said, you know, we changed them, I don't want to do this, we would like to get an extension, and the commission had to say yes, that it had been expired for ten years.
Wow.
Yeah. So that could still happen, and they could still come back and say, we want to revive
Can we still put that sentence in here? Because we can be a little bit more strict, right?
We could put developer should.
Okay.
Should, because then it's basically just an encouraging statement. Shall is a little bit more definitive, as in you must, but I can say developer should make this request.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all my questions, so thank you very much.
Then I can certainly add it to this because you haven't agreed to sign it yet, so if you want, I can add that statement to this findings of fact and then everyone from here on out.
I'd like that. Other questions?
Could I get a copy?
Yes, definitely. I'm sorry, I've given my last one to the city for an entry, so... Are you gonna take this one? Do you need this one?
No.
If not, okay. Thank you. Glad I had it up until I was coming up here, and I apologize for that. Thanks, Diane. So eleven o'clock, and I shouldn't need more than fifteen minutes because I won't need to reread this, but if you really want to schedule more, certainly do so, but basically, I'll just be giving you the city's recap and if you have other questions. And I will let you know before the end of the day what the lane says. I would like to keep this moving and keep it fresh, and it's fine if we're not-
Yeah, let's get it down.
Recap everything every time.
Can I?
That's your call.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nicole.
Bernadette, did you have C.O. here? Dan Denver is here with a survey, too.
I do, too.
For this.
Is now the time? This is a final plat for Gene and Elaine Dyckman that was reviewed on the guest for the last week.
Correct.
Just amended plat, boundary relocation in the Dry Creek Minor Subdivision.
They were both lines. This is just redrawing the lines.
They do. I think they're looking at selling, they are looking at selling one or both of them, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And they've just moved this boundary from here to here, created a forty-acre tract around their home, which sits right, their current home, which sits right here, and then this is all just open land.
Okay.
One of the forty acres.
And that includes this?
It does, yes. The new tract, four-eight-one, would be, this lot would be eliminated, moved to here, and this is, excuse me, just be one.
That part, go with this right here.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions.
Well, we'll meet all our requirements.
On what we support the amended plat of Dry Creek Minor Subdivision?
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Move to second inch? Would approve the amended plat of Dry Creek Minor Subdivision? All the viewers say aye. I oppose the same. Motion carried.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Now, if I'll-
Pardon me? I can. That'd be great. You know what, you need two milers and a one-paper copy, right? I brought a couple extra for the landlord.
We'll get over to take a break and turn back here.
I've signed it. I think so, yes.
Nicole? Do you have a second?